This is Tuesday, October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded, and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. That eighties band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will possibly wind up as a TikTok video shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members anticipated on the agenda, our president can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach. Here, Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
Uh, with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-four P M Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency and the Commonwealth of Mass due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they're concluded their remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights to your name as called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield to the floor and state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Okay. First order of business, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting from our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any corrections that anybody wants to make? Seeing nothing, I will ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Is there any other uh, mail or any other housekeeping or business that we need to attend to?
I have two things.
Okay.
I, I, I move that we pay a bill to the Asbit Regional Housing Collaborative of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for our quarterly dues. Um, to be taken from the Housing Partnership mitigation funds for affordable housing.
Oh, second thought.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to pay five hundred and twenty-five dollars to uh, Asbit Regional Housing Partnership for our annual dues. Any further discussion?
Is it annual or is it quarter?
Quarterly, I'm sorry, quarterly.
Or which, which quarter it's a ten?
Oh, yeah. This one?
School or calendar?
Oh.
Payment. Fiscal year twenty-four, quarter one.
Any further discussion? No, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Jay Teach?
Aye.
Thomas Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Are you gonna write the warrant, Tim?
Um, I did, and it's, and yes, and I'll have it signed.
Excellent. What's your other item of business?
Carolyn has Matt Franz's latest update to the zoning map, which um, I I think looks fine, and he's attached the the signatures that Eloise supplied for all of us. So it's there in the signature plate. And I just wanted to give people a chance to look at it one more time before we have. I guess we're gonna have four or five copies of the three by three map printed out, probably. One for Eloise. Oh, is that what I sent?
That is what you sent. It actually had two attachments on it.
Oh, so let's look at the other one.
The other one did not look like the right one. Let me get over there.
Really?
Hmm. Oh, maybe the other one is the right one. Hold on. Right, cuz this one doesn't have.
Okay, let me send you something else.
Okay.
Cuz that's why am I having trouble? I apologize.
Oh, yeah. I'm looking at this. This is old.
I know it.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, I'll send.
These are April. Yeah.
I got, here's ten sixteen.
Okay.
No, maybe this isn't even the right one then. Let me look again. All right, I sent that over to you. Yeah, I just sent you the right one.
Okay. And. Except there was no attachment.
Down, down below.
Uh.
It's attached at the, after his text.
I see that on Octo- the October fourth. Yeah, must be that, must be that, right? Yeah.
Try that.
Right, let's see. That look like the right one?
Yep, cuz we've eliminated that, uh, C R, Arc.
Right, category.
He had, he had, he had a zoned called Arc C R. So when there was a C R over an Arc zone, he designated that independently of just Arc. And so we we eliminated that, and then he's got the overlays for, um, both over fifty-fives. And he's got Highland Commons, Solomon Pond. Um, and he's included all those pieces that were in Arc that we added at this last town meeting, so.
Right.
I think we're pretty good shape. So if people are fine with it, I can tell them to go ahead and.
Can you zoom, can you zoom in on the, um, on the title pa- on the, uh, signature block, please? My name is, I have two signatures there.
Well, one of them's Jay.
I don't think so.
So who's the top squiggly line?
Me.
That's Jay, okay.
Yeah, you guys all sign the same.
Yeah, we're signing similar. Okay.
Yeah, and me and the town.
That's, I'm in the middle, I know that.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Scary, actually. But we've got Thomas on there, so we're up to date in terms of the current membership, so it's good.
And then the, the location of the, um, that upper gray is
On the left, I mean, on the right?
On the right, yeah.
Yeah. So that.
That's Highland Commons?
Oh, that's, yeah, Highland Commons.
Okay. And then the other gray one.
Right, so this one's Highland Commons, this one's Highland Ridge.
Highland Ridge.
And then this one is, uh, Brook Lane, whatever that's actually really called. And then this one is the River Bridge.
River Bridge, yep, okay. Great, thank you.
So at some point, we might very well take the pieces in Highland Ridge that are under a C R and put them into Arc. But we, we haven't we haven't done that yet, anyway. Um, and we need to think about there are other pieces that are in C Rs that we haven't put into Arc yet. They're, they're privately held. And as a result, we've been slow to sort of throw those into the mix, but it's something we could look at going forward.
Yeah, like.
Carolyn, can you send me, can you send me a copy so I can post it?
I can.
That's the final one, right? Is it, the final name should have a date or something on it so we know which one it is. Do we need to do any, uh, do we need to vote on it or anything?
I think we should vote to accept it.
Okay.
And then, uh, Eloise with confidence can go ahead and take this electronic copy and they can do some, cuz she wants to um, print off a number of zoning bylaws with the new text that the Attorney General's approved, so. I move that we, we approve the zoning map as drawn by Central Master Regional Planning. Was there a date on that?
Not, not that I saw.
We'll ask him to date it as of October, uh, twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. That makes sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see.
I'll have him put that, that, tonight's date on.
Okay. Um, so do you wanna send the dated plan to Jay and Eloise?
Yeah, when I get the dated plan, I'll do that.
All right. So.
A motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept it. Any further discussion? Well, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other housekeeping that we need to do? Anybody have anything else? Nope, okay. Um, our first order of business is a A and R for River Bridge and Lot Six. According to the agenda.
Right, um, Matt's here.
Okay. That's here, Chris is coming. I thought we were gonna do the, um, Energy North one first, cuz Chris is gonna be a little bit late, but I guess I told uh, the other Chris from Energy North that we had a slot at eight forty-five, I didn't realize that. So he's probably not. You see what someone named Chris? Chris, Chris, Chris.
No.
Timula? No?
No.
All right. Cuz I think Chris, Matt will tell us, so Chris said he's, was running like fifteen minutes later.
Okay.
But Matt can handle it.
Sure of it.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Okay, can you hear me?
No, she can't, Matt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Good. Uh, thank you for having, uh, Christopher and I here. We, we had two, uh, items we just wanted to kind of introduce to the board just for, just for the board to kind of know what we're, what we're doing. And the first item was Lot Nine B. Uh, I, I think Chris sent some pictures out to, uh, to Jay, and we just wanted to take Lot Nine B and divide it uh, into Lot Nine C, D, and E. And between Lots Nine D and E, uh, is Bassett Road, which is the reason we wanna just divide that to hopefully uh, to create a more viable potential sales market for those two, two acres. Lot Nine C, Lot Nine D would be about two point three acres, and Lot Nine uh, D would be approximately, uh, a little bit over an acre. And Lot C would just be an additional, uh, set of parking spaces so that someday when the cafe becomes a restaurant, which is our long-term goal, there'll be enough parking to attract a restaurant.
Carolyn, can you, you wanna show the, the map or the, uh, drawing? There's a drawing that shows what, what Matt just said.
Let's see, I can.
First email that I sent you.
The first one.
Number one. And it says something about Lots Nine A, B, and C on the title of it.
It does. So.
Well, there's another one that's got, um,
Oh, wait a minute, this isn't even the right one.
Yeah, nice. You scared me for a minute.
That, yeah. Jay, Jay told me it was the first one he sent. That's the first.
It was the first email. I sent you three emails.
Yeah, that, this was the first one.
All right.
No, there should have been a whole bunch of attachments on each one of them, that's why I sent three.
Just, just hold your hold your horses here.
Actually, I could probably land it too, if you want.
Probably here. River Bridge, A and R. No, not that. Oh, I think it's this.
Yeah, it's labeled oh-six-six, eleven-thirty, A and R Plan Lots Nine B, Nine B, Nine C, Nine D. You see that?
Mm-hmm.
Is it this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, there's another one that has the colors on it, though.
Dude. Killing me a little bit here.
Do you want, I have it on my screen if you want me to.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, of course.
There we go. There you go.
Colors.
Thank you, Jay.
There we go, look at that, we have the technology.
There you go.
Can you make that bigger?
I'm gonna.
There you go.
There we go.
The, I believe the the orange area is the additional parking, and that would become known as Lot Nine C. The blue area, which is where the old liquor store is, would become Lot Nine D. And then the beginning, uh, of the red line, that, that is Tyler Road, and that would become Lot Nine E. And this is just being done. Uh, the Lot Nine C is because years from now, somebody's gonna need additional parking at the cafe, and we wanna be prepared for it. Uh, and, uh, breaking up the two lots from a marketing standpoint, we've just been advised from the different brokers handling us that it, it makes more sense if it's already been approved that way. I don't know that I necessarily agree with it, but that's what the experts are telling us. My brother thought it was a good idea, and we didn't think it was a, uh, a hard ask. And I'm just here not to have the board vote on it, but just to introduce it as something that we want to do in, over the next couple of board meetings, so that you guys would have a chance just to see what we were, what, what our thought process was as it relates to this one part of River Bridge. We just can't figure out how to market back into the community.
So, one, one quick question, the the roads aren't public ways, so I can understand why they would be left off, but in, in the, in the, this print, Bassett Road near Lot Nine C, part of that is is outside of any of these parcels. Whereas the roadway that splits Nine D and Nine E, um, is split down the middle, it appears, so it's, it's held by the, the different parcel owners. Um, so I, I mean, that's just a question we should probably throw at Chris and
We probably should.
Here and just say, why is Bassett Road in the lower part not included in any lot? Where does that?
Bassett Road is, is built, right, and the other ones are not? Does that matter?
Um, Should not. No, Bassett, the other, the other is.
Hmm, I don't think so.
No, I guess. None of the other roads are, are built, and, and kind of wonder what, why you even need them. I was driving through the other day, it didn't seem like they were needed.
Um.
Initially, we didn't want them, and we got pushed back from, I believe, the the fire department. I'm going back five years now, or years. Initially, we wanted to eliminate that, that, that part of Bassett between Lot Nine D and Lot Nine, and Lot Nine E.
Cuz Bassett does a, a U, right? It goes into the apartments and comes back out?
Yes, it does.
So, and if they want it, um, I think we have to be responsive to that because they really wanna have multiple ways to get into that apartment complex if there's a problem, right?
Correct.
Anyway, that's just.
Pretty, uh, has, has been, become pretty popular for people coming into the apartments. From whatever direction, cuz if you're coming in from, from three or four different directions, coming in uh, entering on Tyler, uh, just seems to work well for people.
Sure. So that's just a question for Chris to
Yep.
ponder, why is the lower portion of Bassett not included in any, I mean, where is, where will that possibly exist in space?
Uh, yep, I got it.
And, and does the orange area cut Bassett off? Or it just would continue to go through?
No, the parking would be on the other side of the street. Bassett, Bassett Road would stay where it is, and the, the additional parking would literally be across the street.
Cuz it's not shown doing that way, so.
So that infrastructure, then, the, the road networks in all the rest of the parcel, Tyler and Bassett loops through the apartments
Yes.
is is owned by those parcel owners.
I'm not sure about that. I'd have to ask Christopher.
Yeah, that, I mean, that since, you know, we're just throwing out ideas, but that's, it's just a question to look at. Try to understand it.
I don't know whether T R, T R A might own it, I'm not sure.
Jay, you're sharing that, just so.
I was trying to find the other drawing. Show the rest of the roads. Okay, any other questions?
I will ask both these questions of my brother and get, get back to board members with those answers. Uh, before we meet again.
Okay. Was that the only thing you had, Matt, or did you have something else?
No, we wanted to, uh, discuss the sightlines off of, uh, Tyler Road. When you gave us, uh, the initial approval for the apartments, you asked us to take down, or I'm sorry, for the growing room. Years ago, you asked us to take down three trees for sightlines. Uh, and we, when one of the trees died, we went to take it down, and we discovered we, when we re-looked at the requirements, we should have taken all three of those trees down years ago. Uh, we've now built out the apartments and the daycare center, and there uh, we wanted the board members to give us the courtesy of driving the area and see if it would be possible not to take those last two very strong, uh, handsome trees down. Uh, we're required to, but uh, we're in a community that likes trees, and now that everything's built on that side of the property, uh, I think everyone will agree, uh, there's no reason to take those trees down. They were worried it would be an impediment, and then it turned out not to be when it was all finally built.
So you're gonna leave all three, or you're taking one?
No, we took the dead, the dead one's already gone.
Down, okay, all right.
Yeah, we have two handsome trees left, and you're actually looking at the sightlines now. In this picture, I think Jay took. Uh, and the, that, they don't impede anybody's vision from any direction, which was what the concern years ago that it would, but now that it's finally built, being utilized, it's pretty clear that it isn't.
Are these the two trees in question? The pine and the maple?
Yeah, you see in the little picture here? This, it's three, right, Matt?
It's two.
Oh, it's two.
Yeah.
Is it these two in front of the black car? Or just include that one over there?
Uh, I believe it would be the, the two, the two furthest away from the black car, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no worry about this one at all.
This one's okay, all right, yeah. Yeah, so it's this one and then right there.
Yeah, this is the picture that kind of shows it very well. There was always concern that people coming onto, uh, heading into Tyler, or at, or leaving Tyler would not see each other, and they see, they seem to see each other just fine. Uh, obviously, if somebody's going out, out of there at thirty miles an hour, or somebody's coming around the corner at sixty, the trees won't matter. But it's. But it's, it's worked out pretty well so far. And again, we're not looking for answers tonight. We just thought we'd bring it to everybody's attention that we hadn't fulfilled the promise to the town. Now, ten years later, maybe we don't need to, but we'd obviously have to have the boards say approve that the sightlines are such that it wouldn't be, uh, needed.
Uh, I'm happy to go down and take a look between now and the next meeting.
Yep, same.
And I know what I'm looking for, so.
And if you're in the mood, you see a, a car with New York plates, come in and have a cup of coffee.
Alrighty.
And those were the two items that Chris wanted, wanted to, uh, me to introduce. I want to thank Jay for his help. Uh, and we also like just getting in front of the board again. It's been such a long time. We hadn't had any real reason to be in front of you, uh, but we just wanted to, the opportunity to say hello to all the members.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate your time.
No problem. Matt, is Chris with you yet?
No, but he's not going to be. He, he got, he, he was hoping to be done, and it wasn't gonna happen. Uh, I, I knew that heading in. I probably should have led with that.
Okay, cause the other, when we move on to the housing topic, Chris had found us that, uh, statute forty Y. We should probably look at and talk about. For starter. Home.
Yep, uh, I don't, I, I know little, next to nothing, a little knowledge is dangerous. Uh.
The. We're gonna do. What'd you like to do next? Can, and it's, um, and share, and share.
Yeah, the next item on the agenda is the small houses.
Jay, do you want me to stop sharing you?
Um, well, do you, do you want to look at the, uh, this forty Y thing?
The statute?
Sure.
Yeah.
Cause I, well, I get, I have a summary of it, let me just.
Okay, that's even better.
See if I can find it. Hope it's under housing. There we are. Yeah, Chris had mentioned this and sent a, um, copy of the actual bylaw statute, whatever it was, which I forwarded to you guys, and then this is just kind of a highlights.
So what exactly is this? Is this an existing statute?
I think it's being developed. I don't know if it's been actually
Right.
implemented yet or not. Do you know, Tom?
My understanding is that, um, it's in the process of, I mean, it's passed as, as a piece of legislation, but it's, the, the regs are being drawn up. So it's, it's, so the, the goal is, as I understand it, to incentivize this small cottage housing through some limited support. I mean, if you look at that lower figure, if we blow that up, I mean, if you, if you've got less than ten units, the, the community gets awarded potentially oh, less than twenty, it's ten thousand dollars. If you do something similar to what we might do, you might get seventy-five thousand dollars, so.
Well, plus, plus three thousand dollars per unit.
Yeah, so you, you've got that opportunity. I mean, what?
Yeah, you pay for that with the restrictions that are up above here.
So the density, um, includes the whole parcel, right?
Yeah, so if there's a lot of land that you can't build on, I think you end up having to make the land you can build on much more dense.
So if you had, let's say you had thirty acres, the, the expectation is that you, you'd be building, uh, what, a hundred and twenty units?
I think that's how it works, yeah.
Um.
How does that work even under Title V, never mind our local regs?
Well, you jump to just having to comply with this, the, the state regs, right?
I, I would imagine, yeah.
This cannot exceed state regulations on environmental or health. So you throw out the local regs and you comply with the state reg.
Yeah.
Right, so it's.
But down, you know, the, kind of the area we've been talking about, you've got the water and sewer available from River Bridge, right? It's got a lot of extra capacity.
So Chris also thought that we should get in touch with this guy, Bill Rialt, who is evidently trying to look for communities that would be interested in having discussions about how this might be utilized in their communities, and I thought it, it might be helpful to, uh, get Central Mass to help us in that conversation, and maybe draw Bill in to meet with us at some point, just to explain it in a little more detail and where it's at, and what, how the progress is going, and what the implications would be, and how much latitude a town like, I mean, seems like small little communities might have to adjust to a, a new statute like this differently than larger communities would, and I wonder if they're prepared to address that as they write up the regs, you know?
Right.
I mean, it always seems like one size doesn't fit all when it comes to housing, if you don't have water and surge. And you're a small rural community without mass transit, for instance. You know, then, then should the reg be written in such a way that a small town can still take advantage of this opportunity, but not be held to quite the same standards that a municipality with water and surge and mass transit might, you know? Cause the size of the units are pretty you know, they're, they're in the scale of what we were talking about, but fifty percent have to have three bedrooms. Um. So if, if you, like we said, if you had a thirty acre parcel like the one we're talking about on River Road, and you gotta have a hundred and twenty units, then sixty of those are gonna be three bedroom. Um, if the others were split, one and two bedroom, you know, you'd end up with.
Don't even bother building a one bedroom unit.
What?
Don't even bother building a one bedroom unit in a small acre house like that. You're gonna be two as a minimum.
So if you did two for the sixty and three for the sixty, you know, you'd end up with, um, what, three hundred housing, three hundred bedrooms?
Yeah. That's significant.
Yeah, so I, that's, that's the questions I think we'd have to ask is would you want to scale it in such a way that it got down into a realm where you could only be talking about sixty units instead of a hundred and twenty, you know? But.
I wonder if you could, could you separate out the open space so that in a separate ownership, so it doesn't count, or something like that?
You know, that, that's the questions I think we've got to chase after this Mr. Rialt with. Cause in tri- go to town.
Go ahead.
I mean, is it an overlay? Is?
Right, there, there's a lot of things about this that are questionable. You know, is it something that has to be zoned? Is it something that you know, is it more like a forty B where someone says, no, this is what I'm building? Um.
Well, there's forty B, and then there's a forty R, which already is fully drawn up and in use, and then this is forty Y. So what happened, when you have a forty B, what, what happens with zoning? Do you create a zone for that, or what do you do?
The zoning's tossed out. Your locals.
What's it look like on the zoning map after it's, after it's built?
Well, I mean, they don't look like they're in a residential agricultural zone. We've got a bunch of them, and they're all just clustered units. Um. You know, it's like Soya Hill or Dudley Road or.
So, so it looks on the zoning map, those are still, um, are a.
Yeah. It's just that they, I, I guess, if you opt in, I think in this case, there may be a a condition where a, a community would opt in as opposed to forty B.
Right, that's more my question.
So if you opt in, and I don't know, is Victoria?
Uh-huh.
Victoria might, uh, yeah, she's got her hand raised. She might help us. She's hello, Victoria.
Oh, you're muted. There you go. Perfect. Hi. Um, so it really is what we're doing with the, um, bylaws, what we're creating is what we want to talk with the towns, is if you guys do want to do it as an overlay. Or if, if this is gonna be a completely different type of zone, because we've been looking at a few like case studies, and some people have implemented into an actual zone that doesn't really go for cottage housing, but it's for adults um, zoned areas, or it's for a, um, to fill in the infill areas for single family homes, and they can like opt in using a special permit, stuff like that, but that's something we can discuss, and if we want to set that up with Bill, we can see what he's seen, what he's been doing, and what might work best for you guys, especially with the minimum of four units per acre, and what might work out for you guys.
So Victoria, have you worked with Bill?
I personally haven't. I can see if Emily has. But, um, I'm sure what, once we get in touch, we can like set something up with all of us, or.
Yeah. I mean, I, I still find it appealing to think about creating an overlay that's a district in our community that sort of complies with a, a lot of our objectives, which would be a denser number of units, small size. Um. But, but not required to have this, this, the total number of units that a project like this might entail. Now, you lose out on those dollars. Um. You know, I mean, you got a hundred units at three thousand a unit, it adds up, obviously, so. Um, but it's not huge dollars necessarily.
Right.
And it, it may very well be that the incentive of those dollars isn't great enough for us to give up, so that the the autonomy we have with an overlay that we design ourselves with the help of the commission, you know? Emily, I mean, uh, not Emily, Victoria. Who, what, the other towns that signed on to participate in the, the cottage housing study, can you remind us who those were?
Yeah, let me pull up my list real quick. Alright, so we have, um, Princeton, Sutton, Mulberry, and Stirbridge.
Okay. And none, none of those have ventured too far into this already, have they?
No, they haven't. The ones that have really, um, which we'll talk about later when we go into our meeting for this, but like Hamilton has tried. There's also, um, Dennis, they did it where it was for like more resort type of community, like a beach resort area, and then Concord has also done um, cottage housing.
So is the Concord one Riverwalk and Mill, Mill Run, or whatever it is?
Yeah, Riverwalk, and then, um, the Dennis one is the Heritage Sands.
Okay. Cause we've been looking at Riverwalk for a long time.
Yeah, that one seems like a pretty big success, even when I was like just going through their website. I mean, they're even sold out right now.
Yeah, the one in Devon's too.
Right.
Yep.
And I, and there's one in Chelmsford that's a mix of a, a, a section that's like Riverwalk and then some single family lots on a, on a bigger parcel, so it, I think as a result of having those single family lots that could sell at, at market rate, it helped subsidize the cost of building those cottage units in a more condensed fashion, but a smaller number. I mean, again, I think it was less than a dozen that could build at that Chelmsford site, but it was a little different than Riverwalk.
Right, cause Riverwalk is all cottage, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We have our own, cause we have our two co-housing developments. Don't they fit that same model?
Um.
Or is that not at the same density?
Yeah, that's a good que- I don't, what, what is the size of the units up there? I don't know.
Like the square footage size?
Yeah, cause we, they get two and three and four bedroom units, right?
They're about fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet, I thought.
All of them? Cause I've been in some that are pretty tiny.
Some of them are a little bit bigger. I haven't been in a lot of them. We toured a couple.
Me neither.
We went through that walk.
Yep.
And those were about that size, fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Hmm. Good. So I, I mean, I, I'd like to see us and work with the commission to try to get this Mr. Rialt into have a head-to-head with us.
Yeah. Perfect, yeah, we'll set something up. I'll let Emily know, and we'll, um, in the future, look over and see what we can do for you guys.
The other person that we had, uh, fucking big picture, signed up was, uh, Richard Hanks. Right, it's you. You see him, Carolyn?
He is not here. Lots of other people are, but he is not.
Okay.
Hmm.
About, I was looking forward to hearing his take on this.
You were looking for someone named Chris?
Um, for the, uh, review and their plans for the gas station, yeah.
Okay.
But that's not at this time.
Timmy love.
Right.
Um.
We're gonna do.
I put it in, I put in the agenda at the beginning like now, but then I, I was looking at my emails, and I had told him eight forty-five, so I'm not sure when he was gonna arrive.
Okay. Uh, he has his hand raised.
Hey, can you promote him for a quick, if he's got a question about this topic, we're gonna keep this going for now.
Right.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just letting everybody know that I am here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, I'm not taking.
Um. Well, this is certainly interesting.
Well, I agree. I think we need to, um, continue the dialogue, and I, you know, it was too bad. I was looking forward to hearing Richard talk, um, on his take on this. Uh, I'm still not, I know that this is part of the state statute and stuff like that, but.
I would think that we could be a little bit more creative than this. I know this is just the summary and we should really look at the entire statute, but there's some things in here that I just I don't know if they work for us or not. Yeah.
Correct.
Well, I think the details is what's being still worked out. Right. Yeah. There there's a lot more than what's in the summary in that short document right at the moment. Right, but it you know, as a as a as a small community and and you know volunteers that are that are doing the work here to be handcuffed with that you have to have this approved in four months or it gets automatically done, that just rubs me the wrong way. Right. You know? I know that puts a fire under everybody to get it done, but I don't know. It's one of the things that that kind of bugs me a little bit. Yeah, we don't get a huge amount of money with the small. Yeah, and the incentives that, you know, I mean, I would rather that doesn't move my needle, you know, I I just it's it's nice, but I'd rather see them put it into, you know, infrastructure or something that's going to make that community a little bit better than just a payment for to town wide goes into the general fund and then it, you know, slips through everybody's fingers and doesn't mean anything. You know what I mean?
Sure, and for any sort of reasonable money, we're talking, you know, for a community our size, when you're talking a hundred units, you're increasing the population of the town by percentage points.
Exactly.
You know, where in larger communities, that's not the case.
Right. And it's a one-time payment, you know?
Right, a one day, right, and you know, again, small.
Right.
For what you're.
Right, but.
For what you're taking on.
I understand what they're doing because they don't want to handcuff it and make it so that the no one's going to, you know, use this statute to develop anything. They can't make it so egregious that, you know, but I'd rather see, okay, that payment goes away and then, you know, planning board gets to set design standards as long as they don't accept unreasonable costs. Well, if you put an extra stick of anything on a small unit that they got, you know, a a tight budget to begin with and they're going to argue that it's unreasonable cost.
Right, right. It's it's less expensive if we paint them all the same color.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we put three windows in it and that's it, you know, no garages, no nothing, slab on grid.
Yep.
You know, and you have one door and one window, bingo, that's it.
Right.
They're all the same.
Well, there has to be two doors.
Your doors and one window, yeah, you need two means of egress.
You could get rid of the window to put in the second door.
There you go.
Yeah.
They'll put a window in the door.
There you go.
But you know, and that that's that I it's tongue in cheek, but you guys get my point, you know, it's we've got to have some character to 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 this, you know, we want it, we want to make it livable, you know, we want people to want to go there, not to be housed in a gull hug or something along those lines, you know, make them all out of concrete. And all for cheap, cheap, cheap. Doesn't serve any purpose. A resource, you can chip it up and put it back in the ground and take it out later and use it again. But it's not, the concrete's not very green, so.
Right.
Do you while we're sharing my screen, you want?
You could paint it green.
Paint it green, there you go.
Yeah.
Tom, do you want to do you want to look again at the uh the original River Run plan, which I'd never seen before, just for fun? Just remind us of.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, is that what that was? You said that and I'm like, what?
Yeah, because I had I was chatting with Chris and and Matt and they said, yeah, that sounds just like what we prevented from happening at a completely different time, right? Well, at the at the time it was was proposed, there wasn't any um notion of cottage housing or anything like that. A lot of these, I think, were three bedroom units. A lot of them were crammed in um and, you know, we were trying to maximize the the amount of units that could get onto that that particular piece of property.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, it looks pretty uh pretty dense. Very attractive. But presumably this used this the common water and sewer, right, which is why it can be pushed so tight.
Correct.
Yeah. I don't know what they were doing about sewer, though. Do you remember?
Yeah, seat down in the lower right-hand corner.
Oh, yeah, right there.
Oh, yeah.
Sewer system.
The septic was going to be there.
Yeah, got it.
I wondered if Victoria has other thoughts to share about some of the effort that's gone on so far with this their their cottage housing review?
Yeah, I mean, the main stuff right now we were looking at is previous case studies, not just here, but in um other states as well or other cities around the country. And then we've been looking at some of the strengths and weaknesses that cottage housing can provide, so um what are some of the threats that might come in? So we know there might be parking limitations, um nimbyism resisting towards uh denser areas in their town. But I think like the most we the most we have to just think of like providing that middle housing for people who are either just starting off because we're seeing a lot of younger people coming out into the um workforce, but also the elderly who want to downsize a little bit or even a small starter family home. If it can be so right now, we're just pretty much digging in what will work best for central re- towns across central region that can be tweaked here and there, but pretty much works on what we're looking for. We're not trying to over dense an area either because this is pretty intense. The one right here, I think this is a large scale of cottage housing, but I think if we're looking more towards like putting it within single family homes in those inner filler lots that just provide a little bit more dense it density, it would work better.
So you see this as an overlay?
I personally see it as an overlay, um. The more I've seen on other ones, like when they try to add it as a zoning, I feel like a lot more people get scared with that. And I feel like when people push for more overlays, it gives them more access to um look into it and put it in the we can squeeze it in more um areas than just particularly this one little spot and we just cover it that this can be well mixed and integrated within the area. But um I'll I'm still doing some research. I'm going to have that writing down that bylaw pretty soon, get started actually this week. And hopefully by that next meeting, I can have a draft set out for everyone. I'll send it out for before our meeting. And we can review and tweak and see what works best for everyone.
So do you envision a a a session where you bring all these five towns together to to participate in a discussion or you're going to deal with us independently?
I'm going to double check with Jane, but it seems like we're going to be doing it all together because I know for the store um short term, we're doing a bylaws for short-term rentals as well and those ones we're doing individually now, but I think the starting off point, we're going to be doing it all together. If not, then if some towns can't make it, then we'll push for individuality because we still want that one-on-one talk with everyone. But it seems from what I've heard is that it's going to be all together.
And and we signed up to participate in the short-term rental discussion as well, I recall.
Mm-hmm.
So what what's your timetable on discussing that?
Um, I believe Jane is setting out some emails more recently because that bylaws already done and we're looking at if whether some people are looking more generalized or if they're um general type of zoning or if they're looking more for um planning base in that area, I would have to double check I to see if she sent out an email already for your town. Yeah, that she did. She sent it on Monday, so it looks like from mid-November, she's looking to schedule the time that works to discuss more on that bylaw.
Do you? Did you get that, Jay?
It looks like she sent it to the town admin.
Okay.
Oh, no. Word at townofberlin.com.
Yeah. Planning Board at what at townofberlin.com, right?
That's it, yep.
If that could get kicked over to us, Victoria, that'd be great.
Perfect, yeah. What was it again?
Just Planning Board Town of Ber- at townofberlin.com.
We done sharing Jay's screen for a while?
Think so. You know, the only other thing I have is if Mark Rhodes is there, but um there's some drawings when you're ready to look at those.
Right, he is, um but I don't, are we ready now to look at those?
It's muted. Oh, there is. It it's germane to the topic, so yeah, I pick you up. Okay, let's find that.
Victoria, that the invitation that Jane sent doesn't include the proposed language for the short term?
Um, if it doesn't, I have a copy of that too and I can attach that to as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Of course.
Um, okay, where is it? Oh, there it is.
Seth is also here.
Yeah.
From Dillison Roy. Um, I assume you want me to promote Mark?
Sure, or Seth, so somebody can step us through this.
How about both? Get everybody on board.
Would you like me or Seth to speak on this?
Uh either you or or Seth, so somebody can introduce it and tell us the you know, what your thought process was and why you did certain things.
Sure, Seth, if you'd like to go forward.
Sure, so I I will start. This is Seth Donahoe with Dillison Roy. Uh Mr. Rhodes spoke with me after your last meeting, I believe he had a discussion with you that um seems relative to what you guys are thinking about in the last conversation. We're possibly entertaining um some smaller houses on some hybrid of the current zoning or perhaps an entirely new overlay district um that would allow something like what we've put forward on this concept plan um basically to come to fruition here. Um, what we've shown on this concept plan, so this is one eighty River Road West, uh the former gravel pit. And we have put forth something that is basically a relaxed version of the board's current road requirements that would allow every house to have an individual lot and to have an individual yard, very similar in style to what's already been built in town. With the exception that it's not on an eighty thousand square foot lot. Um and under the understanding that these would likely be much smaller houses restricted to that and possibly restricted to bedroom counts as well. So um thi- this is strictly a very conceptual drawing, um utilizing the property at hand with some of the environment environmental constraints that that we think would come into play. Um the biggest thing being is the subsurface sewage disposal systems or septic system, each lot would be intended to have its own system and its own private well. Um and and that's important because really one of the the biggest hurdles that we would have is finding a place, whether it's a common leaching field or if it were to to pierce the requirement, the state's requirement for groundwater discharge permit, like some of the adjacent properties uh to this very site. Um, we would have to have a a much more involved and much more costly method to treat the sewage on it and tha- that's how we came up with this preliminary layout here. Um, as I'm not sure if we're all shooting at the same target, uh it's much easier when things are defined and I realize that the board is in the process of defining a lot of that. We're open to any feedback, uh if anything the board would like to see, we'd be happy to incorporate into our thoughts for this property or any other property. And um I will let the board speak or Mr. Rhodes speak as as I am late to the party on this.
The um one thing to keep uh in mind um is you can't get a hundred and twenty units on this property, you can't get sixty units on this property. Any of that would trigger the nitrogen to be too high, even if you use the public water supply on the adjacent parcel. And even if you use the septic on the other parcel, uh the other the other septic on Ceni's property is uh less than ten thousand gallons a day. And um you can't really get denser than this uh to 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 achieve a a maximum, you know, a higher density. Uh this is this would be uh could either be three bedrooms with um treatment on the on the systems individually, or it could be all two bedrooms with no treatment. But the this particular plan uh works as far as uh the state requirements, it's it's strictly uh would be Title V, uh there would be no no uh well or septic regulations from Berlin in order to take place and it would need to be an overlay with the uh the necessary waivers to make something like this to work, but still still uh maintaining units at a thousand square feet, whether they're like the ranches and the and the um tapes that we forwarded to you and um deed restrictions on the bedrooms like Seth had said. And you know, the a lot of them, you know, ranches can be starter families, they can be people uh downsizing and can't afford the fifty-five and over communities. Uh people as they uh make more money, they can move out and and buy a a bigger home someplace and free up these units, so so there's a a revolving door with the people that move into them and it and it services the uh I believe the goal that you're looking to obtain, it's not on the larger scale, but it's 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 realistic and it can work. Oh, and by the way, these houses are uh larger than the houses that would go there, they were just houses that we had in the uh in the mix from prior prior projects. So um the houses that we forwarded to are smaller footprints than what is actually physically shown here at the moment, but we were at a time crunch to uh to deliver something to to you guys.
This is got thirty-six units on it?
Yeah, thirty-six units.
But there are thirty-six single family dwellings, um I don't think anything's impossible, so I I know you were toying with the idea of of even denser development. Um, I I really believe that to get to that that higher density, you're going to have to go into like a duplex, triplex, fourplex type of configuration on some of these and even get into um more of a vertical construction, small apartment building style, so the the intent here was to show what could be done with a similar style to to what a traditional single family lot in the town already has um without blowing through every single regulation that the town has in place as well, so it's really taking what we could out of your current regulations, um of course, they're going to need to be adapted quite a bit for this to happen, but but not to be a huge departure from what the town's already doing, but with Mr. Rhodes' intent is really to be able to put forward a a smaller footprint, um like he said, that's that's saleable to whether it's a first-time home buyer, somebody downsizing and they're really likely not intended for somebody to live there their entire life. This is to get a footprint in the community. Some people may choose to stay forever, but others may decide that they want, they love the town and they they would like a bigger lot and a bigger house and like Mr. Rhodes said, uh ideally down the road, they're able to free up these units for somebody else to take advantage of the opportunity as well.
What is it about these that gets them to be dramatically lower cost, though? I mean, the lots are small. What is it about these that gets them to be dramatically lower cost, though? I mean, the lots are smaller, so there's a little bit less land cost?
Uh, it's the uh square footage, you can't, you can't afford to build a thousand square foot house on a two acre lot. So you got, you have a smaller lot, you have uh soils that are friendly for the septic, so your septic costs are less. Your well costs are the same regardless, but your infrastructure, your infrastructure is absorbed over the. Time that the subdivision is built as opposed to. Installing a huge water system and and basically public water and piping all that, and then doing a shared system. So all your upfront costs are are in the beginning, and when, right now, construction loan rates are eleven percent. So to to front load everything. It's uh, it it can't, it can't work, so this is, this is devised to absorb your cost as you build it. And you have your square footage costs on a smaller footprint of a building. And your lot costs, I mean, your your lot sizes, I think these are probably about uh. By the time you have the areas that go off to the well and stuff, um, Seth could correct me, but I think these are basically half acres.
And what's, how many square feet are these, Mark?
Excuse me?
How many square feet are the houses?
Uh, proposing the the majority of them are all a thousand square feet. So now, when you build a thousand square feet, especially a ranch, your your cost per foot goes up because you only have one story. And you still have the same amount of doors as a bigger house. And you s- and you still have a fair amount of windows. So your square foot cost per foot does go up, but when you bring down the the size of the home, your square foot. Cost goes down as well, so it's, what I've found is this is kind of a happy medium and. Something that could be built. And something that could be purchased, uh, the target price was five hundred thousand entry level, which is. What basically we're shooting for, um, I mean, entry level in Berlin, I think is, may even be higher than that, but. Uh, this is what we can afford to do uh with those budget constraints, and still do it tastefully with um. The same material list that we do with our regular homes and. They're still built to code and they're insulated properly and they're very efficient. And they'll probably burn, you know, depends when when these do, whether they'll be uh propane or whether they'd be mini splits and electric, that's a. A whole other issue, but um. I think it would work well for what you're trying to achieve, it doesn't really. Uh, it may or may not go a hundred percent with the the forty Y, but I think the forty Y is gonna be a slow. Process to get multiple towns on board and get the state to to draft a statue. You know, that's a uh, that's a timely thing that has to take place, but if the town's willing to be proactive and do something. That fits their taste. Um, I think this would be a good project.
So just a quick question, the, if you put in thirty-six individual wells and let's say. I don't know, I mean, let's say it's eight or nine thousand dollars a shot. Um, that you're spending over three hundred thousand dollars drilling wells. That is, i- is the cost to try to work a strategy with River Bridge or. Utilizing the the wells that are on the joining property that. Um, might be available, just prohibitive, I mean.
Yeah, your, 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 your cost for your pump house and your distribution. Uh, will.
But the pump house, the pump house is there.
Yeah.
And the wells were certified already.
Yeah.
So it, we're talking about running a line. From the adjacent property to this one, talk, talk me through why that isn't less than three hundred thousand dollars.
After, I have an estimator from another construction company that might be able to answer those questions, but the. And Seth may be really answer to some of it, my experience with um, with uh. Pump houses and distribution of water, like. I suppose this would be a little bit different because it it's it's not a town situation, but. The regulations for town water for the the mains and the hookups and the backflows and the testing. And the constant monitoring uh is is basically fairly costly, like as opposed to also like. The Sundays, they lost their shirt on their, on theirs, on their um. Sewage treatment, there was, it was drastically more expensive than they ever anticipated, so we're not, we're not talking about the sewage, but. The, the distribution of the of the water, I believe, is gonna be. Probably double that cost, but I could back it up with some facts, and if it turns out that. It's not as expensive as I believe, but what is the compensation for the use of that? Water and for the use of that property, you know, it's, I don't, I wouldn't expect it to be free, I don't know.
I mean, those are, that's the type of question we want to engage in, though, so yeah, if you could get some numbers from somebody that helps us do a comparison with. Individual wells as opposed to a, a a distribution system from an existing supply. That would be interesting, and then the next question is.
Yeah.
If, let's say the septic system's twenty, twenty thousand a piece and you've got. So that means you're over six hundred thousand for the septic systems on this site.
No, the septic would be like about seven thousand dollars a piece.
Seven, really?
Yeah, they're right in the ground, they're a tank, a D box and two trenches.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that's in sevens on the high end.
How did the, the co-housing developments, what did, what did they do about water and sewer?
They had wa- they had sewage treatment and they had public, they had a, a um. Shared, they had a public water supply. They ran the uh, they did a uh, a shared system, which is authorized by the state and and not the town. And uh, they pumped all their their sewage down by the pond on. Behind the David Ross area there, the, the um. Le- Lester Ross dam, and uh, what I was not a fan about is um. I I priced out that septic for the contractor, Welch was the contractor at the time, and they had fallen behind. And they weren't getting everything done in time, so they had me price out the construction for that system, and it had a massive. Retain wall out of blocks with a fence on the top. And what I didn't like is it had a stone footing, and at the base of that footing. It had four inch drain pipes along the whole wall. So therefore, once the sewage flew, flowed down through the gravel. It's acceptable for it to enter into the groundwater, but anything that didn't go down into the ground. Runs over the ground and goes down into that pond.
Right, but I don't, what was the cost of that and how did, how did they manage to do that?
Us was outrageous, the, they, they struggled to finish the place. You know, they had, they had all kinds of issues throughout their development, um. It didn't go very well, they're done now, and I'm sure the people are happy, but I I wouldn't use that as a model. And again, with the, we're back to the front loading the infrastructure, so you have the, you have the pump house. You gotta get the water to the property line, I suppose if you did your main, uh, you know, a couple hundred feet at a time. You're gonna defer some costs, but the cost of a one inch plastic. Water line in a, in a three quarter inch conduit for electricity is, is um. For me, it's a no brainer, my, I mean, I could, I could back it up with some numbers, but it uh, and then the the same thing is, you know. Is that piece of property, is that water system free? You know, is, you know, what what do you, what do you have to pay for that, and what do you, you got easements to come across and. Just seemed a little more cumbersome to me, but that's just me. The individual wells are easier to monitor. Um, they're, they're tapping the same aquifer, just in different areas. And probably more wrapped to not put as much burden on the aquifer.
Well, I guess one question would be, individual septic systems are not monitored, and as a result. Everybody that's got one is ignoring the fact that it's not. Is or isn't functioning, you know, whereas a, a, a shared system or a system that's attached to a larger. Project um, has the capacity to be monitored, so you don't end up with. What happens on individual lots sometimes, so that's, that's one of the benefits I see is.
If you uh, if you add treatment to the individual seat uh systems that are inspected annually, so if you add it, if you add aeration. To the uh, to each system, like a fast system, then uh, they're, they're inspected every year by law. And they're, they have to be properly maintained, that would be one way to uh assure that.
Good.
Yep.
You, you can put that in for seven thousand dollars, huh?
Uh, once you go to these, to the, to the aeration for the system, you're adding about eight thousand dollars to the cost of each one of them, but you're also. Cutting the nitrogen level by a third, so you can up your bedroom count, you might, you. You won't be able to add extra units, but you could, these could all be three bedrooms instead of two bedrooms if you added that to the um. If you added that to the equation.
Now we're up to fifteen K, not seven K for the septics, right?
Yeah.
Like two hundred and sixty dollars a year for maybe one.
This has been helpful.
Is there any way that we could help the board more specifically, as I think in the eyes of this specific property? It, to me, it sounds like you're grappling with the decision, is, is it feasible to have some type of. Um, broader water or sewage distribution system throughout the area, or is a lot specific use like we're proposing? Um, probably the best course of action, so it sounds like Mark's willing to find some numbers related to that. Um. We got a different plan up now.
Yeah.
Great.
Jay's poking around.
Well, we need, we had.
So, um. I'm sure you know that I don't really love the three hu- the four houses in the two hundred foot. Um, riverfront area. And I, we had ta- I, I mean, I understand the reason for the loop road, um. Is there any way that we could do something a little less development feeling?
Like incorporating like a continuous perimeter of open space or. Uh, a percentage of open space into the development?
Something, I just, I, I. Like I said, I understand from a cost point of view why you do a loop road with houses on the outside and houses on the inside. Um. It just feels like every other development.
Sure, sure, so I I think the biggest threshold that we run into with anything on, on private sewage, um. Is the state's ten thousand gallons per day cap that triggers a sewage treatment plant. Um, in plain English, that equates to ninety bedrooms, uh, so that that would be. Basically a max yield scenario, you, you're looking at. I can't give you an exact number on what a sewage treatment costs, but it it's, it's in the millions when you add that level of infrastructure or something. So piercing that veil basically forces the developer's hand that. Um, you need to get max units, max yield, which gets into that fourplex configuration. Multi-story, small apartment building configuration, so by all means, we can consolidate this. Um, and perhaps go to one large shared. Septic system, leach field soil absorption system configuration. Um, it it will probably result in slightly fewer units, though. And that's just by the nature of of what we're tied to under, under the state's environmental codes for that.
I don't, I would, I would object to that, Seth, because it it's, the infrastructure is just gonna cost too much, and it's gonna happen all in the beginning. And it's just not gonna make the project feasible at that point. The, and as far as, you know, not look like another subdivision, you know, it's a burned out pit, we're reusing the property for something. Decent, and the, the perimeter's where the wells are. Is uh keeping as much open space as possible, the only area that's still wooded. And as far as the riverfront, you know, I I think we only have two and a half, but by the time we, we shrink.
There, there's the one down by River Road that's in the Asabet River.
Oh, gotcha.
And then the, the, the two and a half, which is really three, um, yeah, no, and and I get it, I, I get. Um, I just had high in the sky hopes for something a little less. Development looking.
It's kinda hard to achieve.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, the benefit we're in now is that. We've got the commission working on a overlay with these other towns that we can begin to look at that language, we've got. This proposal and and Mark and Seth have made generate some other numbers for us in regard to. You know, the questions we've had about septic and water, and then we've also got the possibility of having a conversation with this. Rep from the state that's dealing with the forty Y, so. Um, and then, you know, potentially we can get Richard in on a conversation with us, uh, you know, as we go forward, so. I think, I think, uh, I think this is a good start, you know?
We, we will uh keep tinkering, Mr. Rhodes and I will discuss some of this feedback, um, see if we can come up with a different idea. Uh, is there, is the board have a preference of like a model development that they've seen in surrounding communities that? That they like this tailored after, or is it kind of like a piece of this development you liked and piece of another one? Ju- just so that we can kind of shoot at the same target on this.
Well, I like the notion of you guys developing a, 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 a proposal that's. That works for you, because it's gonna be something that we can then compare against. What Conker did with Riverwalk and what the commission might very well come up with for model language that we could tweak. Um, so I don't have any trouble with you continuing to. To tweak this based on some of the conversation we had tonight, because it's, it's gonna inform. What, what you're trying to accomplish, and you're still trying to work within the confines of numbers that work, so I think that's, that makes sense.
Yeah, I know.
I don't, I don't see where there's a lot of tweaking to be done, I mean, it's, it's either, basically, if you guys like and support this concept, then. We could pursue it, but there's only so much room, there's um, and there's, and you have to have a certain amount of units. To make things feasible, and if you're trying to hit a target of five hundred thousand and have this type of housing available. Um, this is, this is basically. A blueprint to do that, I mean, if you, if you switch to duplexes, it's a whole different animal, but no longer single family houses. I mean, people will buy them, don't get me wrong, but if you go to duplexes, it it makes the whole thing. I don't know, easier, or, uh, to me, I, I don't, I think the duplexes are are more of a uh. Of a city feeling or a different development, and you know, they're condos, and then you go by the condo statue, and then. You know, the whole game changes, this is, this is giving people. The ability to to own a single family home, have a D D piece of property, have something they're proud of. And uh, and it fills, it fills a void that cannot be obtained any other way. You know, you'll, you'll never see houses this size built in town, if you, if you don't. Re- if you don't, if you don't support it and and reinforce it.
Certainly, the drawing's useful because it certainly highlights the constraint of having individual wells and septic systems. What's on the design of the. Development, right? Almost anything else you want to do that make it more attractive, like you say, Carolyn. Um. Can only be done if you don't have to put wells and septics.
Right.
Feet apart on every single property.
The, the septic's are, the septic's are a hundred percent in the grounds, they're a hundred percent in the ground, they're part of the yard, you. They don't even become anything you look at, the wells are scattered off and they're in the woods. And the well lines in the ground, so you could basically erase all that and and take it out of your mind and out of your vision. And then all you have left is the houses, the roadways and the driveways, so. Again, I'm, 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 I'm gonna say if you, if you start. again, I'm 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 gonna say if you if you start going to a shared system, you start going to a public water supply, the cost constraints are gonna get too high and then this this is just not gonna be valid. It can't be done.
Yeah, so some of the more modern designs I've seen for these small developments, they've got the houses clustered together in a lot more open space that's shared.
I can understand that if you had something that was worth saving. I mean, if you if you've ever walked out there and it's 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 all invasive species and poplar trees and piles of fill. It's uh
They have like little park areas and and a fair amount of open space and it's and you plant it with trees and noninvasive species and the houses are closer together. I think that's what people are doing.
Yeah.
I don't know how you do it when you when you have an individual well and septic on each property. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how you would make that happen. I mean, maybe this is just not a great property to use for what we want to do.
Yeah.
Why don't we leave it? We'll we'll take your feedback. Uh Mr. Rhodes and I will discuss further and then hopefully we'll be back to the board um with some different options that I just personally, I I grew up in Massachusetts and I think we truly need an opportunity for people to get into uh different types of housing. As we've all watched, housing prices skyrocket. Um whether you're young or old, there there has to be other options and unfortunately, we seem to all be forced out of our towns at this point.
Just something else that I honestly have no idea. So instead of one large shared system, what would uh does it change it or does it matter if you do smaller clusters? Like five or six on a shared well and septic?
Fires don't like to share. Fires like the pride of owning your own piece of property and having your own well.
The issue really comes down to the well, too. Um once we bump ourselves into in when we move ourselves away from individual private wells and we go into um the public water supply threshold, the protective radius zone one around the well where there can be nothing around it. Well, that's fantastic for open space. Uh it essentially wipes out massive portions of the site to support that. The entirety of the zone one radius generally has to be on the site or you at least need to be in control of it. It can't overlap onto other adjacent properties and and that becomes problematic. It's great for clustering, but again, it it adds a whole element that you're removing a huge portion of the development area. Um and then the time and cost to permit the public water supply is pretty intense as well that that frankly, a development decide may not be able to support.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that. And and honestly, I just don't know the answer to this. You know, i- is so is it each individual or everybody together? You you know, like, so if you do two houses on the same well, are there different regulations?
Uh so Mr. Rose and I can certainly speak from experience that that used to be common practice. Um DEP does the reserve the right to look at these as a combined facility to essentially cluster them and say, even though you're on individual lots and that you have um individual lot lines for each of these proposed wells that are are private, they're gonna say that, or they may exercise their ability to say that this is now a public water supply. We're looking at as an entire combined facility and push us into that process anyways. And that's really something that's out of our control. Certainly could be addressed early in the permitting process, but if they um choose to exercise their discretion on that, it it could essentially be a deal breaker um for the whole.
They've chosen to do that already. They've set a clear path. They've set a precedence.
Yeah, it's 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 a loophole. Um in plain English, I I believe the state has been looking to close that for a while and they're effectively closing that now.
Okay, a- again, just curious.
No, it's 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 been done. And that's the crazy thing is you'll see a lot of these cluster developments, um and that's how they did it in towns that do not have municipal sewer and municipal water. Um it's 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 very difficult at this point to get into a cluster configuration uh when you do not have a sewer system and municipal water system. I think we've talked a lot. Um I think we should leave it. Mr. Rhodes and I will discuss further and then um hopefully be back before the board sometime soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So one thing that kind of enlightens me on is the value of the very high value of the existing public water and sewer at River Bridge. Right? And the other property, there's at least one other property down there that could share it, right? There's the the one that the town owns and and the one adjacent to it. Like if there were some development like this put on that site, it would be able to use the public water and public sewer. Which would make the whole thing much easier to design in in a way that you wanted to design. Maybe.
Right. I know there's a lot more ledge on that site.
Right.
Um I don't know what other physical characteristics are different, but I know that that's.
Be uh if they're gonna be slabs and they don't need water and sewer at each site, why would the ledge matter? But you gotta still run the lines. Oh, yeah, right. Stuff to the right. Both incoming and outgoing. I mean, do you think it would be worthwhile? Not sure who would do it, trying to just find out what the opportunity is and the challenges are with trying to take advantage of that existing public water and sewer in that area.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'm not getting a clear idea of what the real cost is.
I I I think somehow we have to incorporate that into the discussion. Um I the the other person that we talked about trying to involve was uh the the developer of Riverwalk and that Devon site and I'm I'll I can reach out to him if if you want me to and see if we could lasso him into a conversation.
Well, I was hoping Chris was gonna come because he had he had told me, I thought the capacity they had left over on their sewer system, that that said a hundred and eighty bedrooms, but I'm not I'm not sure.
It's it's pretty significant because they're not flushing toilets anywhere near the degree they thought. And I thought it was twenty two thousand gallons or something like that. You know, so.
And the and the other piece of land that's that we could consider allocating for this type of housing is is that lot nine that we were looking at today. Right? Because they seem to be having an awful lot of trouble finding a commercial use for it. And we didn't like the proposal for the townhomes, but is there something in between that? You know, would help us with our challenge of getting starter homes and senior homes and whatever that could go on that lot if we zoned it for it. I think that's gonna be a tough sell. You do?
Agreed.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, are we over our time on the?
We are. We are over the time.
I I just wanted to ask if Victoria wanted to add anything else before we s- thank her and sign off.
As of right now, I don't have anything, but I did just send that email out along with um the PowerPoint that we use to present and also the draft by law by law that um has some where we will ask municipalities um where they're they they tend to more lean towards on like limits of um how long should a short um the fee should be or how long do should they be permitted to stay in one location for a short term rental, things like that.
Great. All right.
All righty.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. You have a good one.
Hey, good night.
Good night.
Um.
Do we switch the picture now?
What?
Want me to switch the picture to the gas station?
Yeah, is the proponent there?
Yes, so that that's Chris, correct?
The other Chris.
You guys read that? Is it too small?
Hmm. Some of it's some of it's legible.
You want me to zoom in more? This is the and back here, I think, is a bunch of propane tanks, so I'll zoom it up so you can't see that. It will go. There we go.
There we go.
All right, uh can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you. Um good evening, everybody. Uh for the record, uh Chris Tumula, uh I'm a professional engineer uh with Green and Peterson with our offices located uh up here in Salem, New Hampshire. Uh and I'm here um on behalf of um Energy North, who's looking to redevelop the property uh located at two sixty five Central Street. Um so the the plan you have before you tonight uh is actually a combination of uh map sixteen lots thirty five and thirty six. Um it's a combined twenty seven acre uh parcel of land located in the residential uh agricultural agricultural district. Uh and as I indicated, uh we're here tonight to discuss a redevelopment of the property um as part of a special permit process with the Z B A um based on our meeting with Richard Hanks uh earlier in um uh September. Um and so based on that meeting, um it's our understanding that we need to um apply for a special permit to expand a preexisting uh nonconforming use um or get a zone change uh to potentially uh the a commercially zoned um parcel through the town meeting. Uh as I'm sure you're all aware, um the site is the location of the existing mobile uh which currently has a small eighteen hundred square foot convenience store, uh a retail uh fueling canopy in the front with four islands, uh a diesel canopy in the rear with uh two fueling islands, uh twelve total parking spaces and access via both Central Street as well as uh Taylor Road. Uh so what Energy North is basically looking to uh raise the entire development um for the uh for a new retail uh motor fueling outlet and expansion of uh some diesel and bulk fuel offerings uh which we locate in the rear of the site. So the plan you have before you tonight is uh shows a a new six thousand square foot convenience store uh with a coffee shop, drive through and pizza shop, uh a new retail fueling canopy in the front with four islands, uh thirty parking spaces. We're showing a new diesel uh fueling canopy in the rear with four islands, uh five tractor trailer parking spaces in the rear as well as two uh thirty thousand gallon above ground propane storage tanks. Uh proposed access to the site uh would be uh both from um Central Street as well as Taylor. Uh we've pushed the driveway uh along Central Street further from the intersection, so we have a full access uh curb cut for the retail portion um of the store and then an egg an enter only um curb cut for the uh for the diesel and the propane fueling in the rear. Uh as I'm sure you're also aware, uh there is a pretty significant uh grade difference um from Central Street all the way up to the back of the property. Uh it ranges uh essentially where we're showing um the propane and the truck parking in the rear. It's about a thirty to forty foot elevation change. Uh so in order to uh access the uh the rear of the site from Taylor, uh which would actually be an exit out driveway, um we had to uh generally orient the driveway uh in this manner because not only are there some significant elevation uh changes on the site, uh but Taylor Road itself uh slopes at a slopes up at about a nine percent grade. Um we we do understand, we do have some challenges on the site, um both based on our discussions with staff um and meeting with the planning board is is basically our first step in this whole process and and I'd be happy to answer any questions I can uh this evening.
Mr. Wheeler, you're muted.
Yeah, I I I'm following the rules. I wanted to be recognized before I.
Okay, you may be recognized. Mr. Wheeler, you have a question?
I'm sorry, we we don't usually follow the rules, but anyway. Um so I'm I'm trying to get my head around a a preexisting nonconforming use on on one parcel. You're gonna you're gonna add to that parcel. So we're creating a new lot. Um but it's agricultural residential, so I'm I'm trying to understand how the town would be able to allow the expansion of a commercial use in a non-commercial zone when it's a new lot. Um it's not an existing use that's nonconforming on an existing lot that wants to be expanded. It's the creation of a a new lot, so seems like the rules get reset. Um but we'd have to look at that. The other question is in in our zoning, um if this were a commercial zone, the maximum size of the building is limited to four thousand square feet um for a commercial structure. And that's if this was in a commercial zone, which it isn't. So if it became a commercial zone through, you know, Town Meeting Act to rezone it, you'd still be short by a couple thousand square feet. Now there is that option of transfer development rights in our bylaw where you protect open space in a residential agricultural zone with a C R and then depending on how much land you protect, you can increase the size of your commercial structure above the four thousand, which is what Pierhockey did at the Rotary. So that's an option that would be available, but it only if this was zoned commercial, which um like I said, would take town meeting. The history of this is that in nineteen ninety six, the planning board brought to the town um we wanted to confirm the the zoning that was in place and we had we modified it in a few cases. This parcel, the proposal the planning board brought to town meeting was to have this parcel remain as a commercially zoned parcel. But the on the floor, a motion was made by citizens in the neighborhood to to take it out of the commercial zone and it it reverted back to residential agricultural at the time. So where you need two thirds support, I'm I guess the question is, is the is that same interest in keeping this a small scale commercial development, um what's going on in that neighborhood still, you know, is there would there be a willingness even to entertain the notion of rezoning this on the town floor?
I I definitely appreciate the 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 history of that. Um and you know, it's something that, you know, we can you know, you know, definitely uh, you know, keep in mind, um, you know, if if the product does, you know, move forward, but I definitely appreciate that.
And if I may, we don't allow drive-throughs.
Right.
Yeah, we we fully understand that as well.
Okay.
Um so you're.
And the history of that is that has gone to town meeting three or four times in the past six or seven years and it and gets voted down every time and at this point gets voted down almost purely on principle because people keep asking. So just understand that as well.
Sure. Yeah, and and the um, you know, the reasoning for the uh for the drive-through, um, you know, we looked at this from uh proximity to the highway, you know, not the, you know, in the in a in the downtown area or, you know, in in a fully um, you know, other and in in other areas like that. We just looked at it purely from, um, you know, how uh Energy North operates their current facilities um and then location to the highway.
So it it the the opportunity that like, I think you first talked. So it the the opportunity that like, I think you first talked about trying to get some sort of variance. I I don't see that as a an option at all in this case. It seems like the only way to go about this is to to look at the rezoning. And it would entail a so have you've acquired all of lot? Well, it's map sixteen parcel thirty six, right? That's you've acquired that whole parcel?
That is correct, sir.
So that's like twenty six plus acres.
Correct.
And and some of that, the upper portion of it is zoned limited business, but the piece that you're talking about developing is adjacent to the existing small little, what is it, forty six thousand or no thirty seven thousand square feet, I guess?
Right.
So the the piece that you're talking about adding is currently, like you said, residential agricultural. So would you would your plan be to rezone the entire twenty six acres? Or just the portion that you want to build on?
I I guess we're, you know, we're sort of open to, you know, what would be the the best approach right now? We're just focused on, you know, the the front portion of the gas station development. You know, if it's if there's if there's a reason or you know, a benefit to rezone just a portion of it rather than the whole lot, you know, we're we're definitely looking in into, you know, any any you know, potentials for that, you know, I think the the point of this meeting is, like I said, to to open up some dialogue with the planning board. Based on our meeting with, you know, with Richard, it was, you know, potentially the expansion of the preexisting or the zone change through through town meeting. So you know, we're just trying to explore what the what the best approach would be and, you know, getting feedback from the board is is definitely, you know, what we're looking for.
So the the footprint that you're looking at here with the all the way back to the propane tanks, that I mean, you're talking three acres? How big a parcel does that become?
I don't have an exact number, but if I if I did it, so basically, you know, the the front existing lot thirty five is is, you know, just under an acre. So we're probably looking at anywhere from three to five acres of of this current development area.
Okay, and that would leave twenty of that back parcel plus.
Correct. And and this is and this is often just for, you know, the development area, which would consist of, you know, pavement, parking, etc. Obviously, you know, we need a septic, we need well. So there would be, you know, and there's there's obviously some, you know, a significant amount of grading that would that would occur. So but that would all generally be within, I probably think that that three to five, you know, acres plus or minus.
And if if the so the it's the part where the propane tanks is what you said, twenty five or thirty feet higher than the street level? Your proposal would be to remove a lot of material so you could get trucks to come into those diesel fueling stations?
Yeah. So the access would be, you know, essentially they'd be coming off the highway, taking a left into the site through that that secondary driveway entrance, entering the the diesel in the rear and then circulating, you know, counterclockwise out through through Taylor Road. And because of the grades, I think I think it was anywhere from thirty to forty feet even. Because of the grades, that's why we had to have that that longer driveway throat to to access onto Taylor Road. So any, you know, we haven't done any any formal grading or drainage design. We just we just understand, you know, looking at the grades out there, we did a couple of spot shots and said, all right, you know, Taylor Road is at elevation X, we need to get up from from that into the site and that kind of dictated the length of the driveway. So there there will be a significant amount of you know, earth disturbance and and grading out there.
Yeah, I don't want to monopolize, but I mean, it's so it seems to me it's it's a question of developing a proposal to rezone the parcel so it's commercially zoned, so it allows the use. And then dealing with the transfer of development rights through that section of our zone by law that would allow the larger structure to be built if a CR was placed on some residential agricultural land that was and in this case, because they own some residential agricultural land that's adjacent to what might become a commercial zone, they could put a CR on the adjacent land and use that to up the size of the the structure that they want to build. So that would I mean, that's the the plus of owning more land than that's residential agricultural. So I mean, that's an option anyway.
So so is that essentially, you know, big picture of providing just more open spaces as part of that that process? Make making sure that it's not disturbed, developed, etc.
What happens is we've we've got a provision in the bylaw that says if you want to build a building larger than the four thousand square feet that's allowed in the commercial zone as a maximum. And in the case of pure hockey, they ended up building a thirteen thousand square foot building. And in that instance, they were they protected about twelve acres with the CR. I mean, that was a sizable increase over what you're talking about. The problem that the the other twist is that I think there's a provision in that bylaw that says that the building you build has to be two stories and X amount of space, maybe forty percent has to be on the second floor or something like that, which doesn't help you at all. So that's I mean, we'd have to look at that more seriously. But it it would still be a battle of trying to go to town meeting and and get that two thirds vote to rezone it for commercial use. That might be a real tough not to crack. And if the project isn't viable without the drive through, as Carolyn said.
Right, then it's dead in the water.
That that's a tough one, too.
I wouldn't I wouldn't say it's I wouldn't say it's dead in the water by any means for not having the drive through. We've we've developed, you know, some of their sites that don't have drive throughs. You know, this is just, it's like I said, it's it's an added amenity that we're hoping to, you know, look at here, just based on the proximity to the highway.
So I it, you know, it's it's a large lot. It's surrounded by land that is already protected in conservation. You know, so if you cut off seven acres and put the other nineteen into a CR, I'm sure the neighbors around there would be more comfortable. Well, I guess I can't say I'm I'm sure, but one would think that the neighbors might be more comfortable if they know the rest of the land is protected in allowing that corner that is already commercial to become commercial.
Yeah, and again, you know, it's something it's something we can look into. You know, obviously, we want to make sure that you know, we're not ultimately impacting any potential future development if they want to do anything in the rear. We don't have any master planning, you know, at this time, like I said, it's we're just looking at this at this front portion. So we'll, you know, we'll look into your bylaws and and, you know, we can talk to Richard, you know, as needed and, you know, try to explore those options.
Yeah, I guess I I would concur with what Tim said that I don't see any avenue here except for rezoning. I I just don't buy the idea that you can expand a preexisting nonconforming use into a new lot and into a zone where it wouldn't be allowed. But I would also say that rezoning here is going to be a really tough pull. And my own gut about it is that you would you'd really have to protect a great deal, if not all of the remaining parcel, if you want to do something this big and get buy in from the town.
There's also the issue that we're not supposed to be doing spot zoning, right? Does that apply to this?
I I don't believe that. I mean, it was zone, it's a it's a commercial use. It was in a commercial zone before, you know, it I I don't think any and it's adjacent to through the highway network, other commercial land that's on the other side. So I mean, it's it's not an isolated little island in the same way that it might be if it was up on Randall or something.
Well, I was wondering whether across the street, the two fifty six, not two sixty five is also kind of odd in being zoned AR when it's been in a commercial use. If we're going to take it to town meeting, we could and and are there other properties? If you look around that whole area near the intersection of the highway, are there other parcels that really should be commercial that are not currently?
Well, the the corner to the east of this is is zone limited business already. And that's why, I mean, then there's a commercial use that's gone into that. Greenhouse uses are allowed in a residential agricultural zone, and that's why that use was allowed on that opposite side of the street. The majority of that is in a CR already, so it's it's not as simple. And of course, the veterinary clinic is allowed in a residential agricultural zone as well. So I I'm not sure where I I'd rather look at this in isolation, I guess, as opposed to.
Yeah.
But I agree with Thomas and and Carolyn in that the the protection of the remainder of the parcel would probably be the the law that might encourage people to even consider the possibility of rezoning this into a commercial use and expanding the the enterprise. Without that, I don't think it would fly any distance at all.
No, I think it would have a snow cone's chance in a pizza oven.
Well, we we are looking to have a pizza shop here, so.
That's why I use that's why I use the metaphor. Yes.
Tom Eloise has her hand up.
You promote Eloise?
Eloise.
Hi, I am on the energy committee and I was wondering if there was any possibility for energy recharging state stations where you said, I thought I heard you say you might have a restaurant, too.
Yeah, so it's it's kind of hard to see in this plan, but to the right of the the fueling canopy, we do have a little hatched area. And then we have a note to the right of that. It says two proposed charging, charging EV charging stations.
The writing was too small for me to see. I apologize.
Yeah, I keep telling my wife all the time, I need a new prescription. Trust me, it's it's hard for me to see as well.
I would encourage Thomas to give us his lecture on charging stations like he did on the golf side of the equation.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, I do not understand why you have so much space attendant to fossil fuels. When I, you know, I'm driving home in a fossil fueled vehicle, I have to admit, that said, you know, demand for that is going to peak. You know, at the end of this decade and when, you know, people are desperate to have convenient charging stations and then to see this plan with that little hatch mark in all of the space that is dedicated to to fossil fuels of various kinds. It it's not impressive and it's not forward looking.
It is duly noted. The 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 EV world is is ever expanding. A lot of our clients have, you know, implemented EV charging stations on their sites. The 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 problem with the EV world is it is very, very expensive. If you really need federal funding to get a lot of these sites to have the stations, the EV charging stations. It's just it it's a very cost cost prohibitive at this time. Our clients are looking to do, you know, EV EV charging where they can. But, you know, I just I continue to indicate that it is very, very cost prohibitive at this time.
I'd love to see scripture in verse on that. That that's interesting. If you have any materials, that would be very interesting to see.
You could do it all along the back of that building where the drive through is.
You have a drive through charging station.
Oh. I don't we'd allow that either.
Do you know if there's federal funding or state funding available to offset the cost of charging stations?
So so that's typically what our clients will look into if there is any federal funding. I I'm not for this site in particular, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I I don't know if either Mike Tierney or Rob Kavanaugh from Energy North are are in the the audience. They might be able to answer that better than I could.
Mike Tierney?
Yeah, this is Mike Tierney. I'm the vice president of development for Energy North. Can everybody hear me? Okay, I apologize. I'm working from my phone this evening. Okay, great. Yeah, so to Chris's point, right now, you need a minimum of of four charging positions in order to get any type of funding. I've been to several seminars recently with the power companies. The biggest problem that makes it cost prohibitive today that they're trying to work through is the demand charges that come from the utility companies. It's not something that's talked about very much, but what everybody has found, they started putting charging stations in and then all of a sudden they were getting slammed with these enormous bills from the utility companies. And so what they're trying to do is they're trying to figure out how they can balance peak demand with respect to the charging stations and it's it's a state to state issue. It's something that's evolving. I'm sure it's something that will work itself out over time. And because people are not really because it is cost prohibitive at this time, the various states and the government along with work with the utility companies, everybody's working together to make it less cost prohibitive and more enticing for people to adopt charging stations. So what we're doing as a company is we're putting in all the infrastructure. So all the conduits, we're identifying space where the EV charging can be. And then we're just kind of waiting for it to evolve through the various regulatory boards and and the federal grants and et cetera, et cetera. And then when it's appropriate, we plan to install it.
And do you have any sense for how how many stations and so on could could go into the reserved area on the sound?
Yeah, typically, we're looking at a minimum of four. A minimum of four. I know we showed two on this concept plan, but again, it's just a concept plan. Because the funding, the the rules just came out. Now, if you want to get X amount of funding, you have to have four spaces and that's something that's very new. And again, it's state to state. One state might be four, another state might be five, et cetera. So it it's really evolving as we speak. It's it's a pretty fluid situation. And and it becomes really complicated. And I know you may have made a statement earlier about you know, peaking in ten years, but quite honestly, it's going to take a lot longer than that. I've been to a lot of EV seminars where we, you know, it's on the front burners with all of the energy companies and you know, there's still a lot of work that needs to get done with respect to the grid, funding. And then just the automakers themselves, they, you know, they've jumped all over this initially, but things have come really slowed down quite a bit. And right now, we're looking at, I I want to, don't quote me on this, I don't have it in front of me, but I think twenty thirty five EV vehicles will only be about twelve percent of the overall vehicle population.
Interesting.
Yeah, it it. Yeah, it it's, it's not, you know, if you just looked at it from, I guess, you know, meteor or what's out there without really you know, living it like we are, um, because obviously we have a major interest in where EV is going and the timing of it all and how we invest our capital, et cetera. Um, it's a little further out than than people understand.
Mm-hmm.
You know, put some generators in and use that diesel fuel, then you can make your own electricity.
Just put some solar panels on the canopies.
We've done a little bit of that, we've done a little bit of that, we're not against green. Um, it it's just, you know, we we have to have the products for the customers today, so, you know, like home heating oil is is, um, on the decline and propane is on the rise. Diesel and biodiesel products are on the rise, gasoline is on, is, uh, is declining, so. Which, and you know, and EV is increasing, but at a much slower rate than people realize.
So, Mike, when you build a project like this, what do you see as the the timeline? The the life expectancy of a unit like this is what, fifteen years and then you you come in and rehab it again, or? What's on your?
Well, not, I I I wouldn't say the fuel, I would say um, every seven years is is about the time that we remodel a convenience store. And as you probably know, the the convenience world has really changed, right? From back, um, back in the day where it was just, you know, cokes and smokes, they would call it, you know, little under canopy kiosks with gasoline and gasoline was the big driver. Today, convenience stores are growing and the food business itself um, is a big market. So if you look at anybody that's building a convenience store today, it's anywhere from four thousand to six thousand square feet and is primarily driven by food. Uh, believe it or not, um, so the margins have switched, um, cigarette, you know, tobacco, that's declining. That was a big margin thing back in the day. Um, so that whole business um, is really changing a lot, it's really being driven by food. Uh, like I said, you know, we're starting to add electric vehicles, um, the propane business is growing because a lot of people are moving away from home heating oil and moving to propane. Uh, that business is growing, um, and then the biodiesel diesel world, that that volume is actually going up substantially. So many people have, as much as they drive an EV, they're buying diesel vehicles, believe it or not. Um, and biodiesel is a big thing, so, um, you know, specific to your question, it's every seven years where we give the convenience store building a facelift. But the the then you have to, usually you have to replace the piping in the tanks or upgrade them and historically that's been the case. Uh, with double-well fiberglass tanks and piping and you know, the monitoring systems that are in place today. It hasn't been long enough to really know what the regular basis will be for replacement, if that answers your question.
Yeah, that's great. Now, your your competitor on the other side of the highway came in with a similar proposal of uh, five thousand square foot, um, rehab of the site there where the Gulf is a bigger footprint, um, EV stations, expanded convenience, that sort of thing, and, uh, and that was what, two years ago, I think we first started talking to them. Um, they've they've disappeared from the scene and and, uh, we haven't heard from them for quite a while, I
They remodeled the store, they just finished remodeling the store.
Right, they couldn't get that last corner lot.
Yeah.
Oh, they, I thought they had.
Nope. That's, that's the, um,
Inacasa.
Car wash.
Oh, right.
Proposed site.
So that's what happened with that one, okay, that answers that question.
Yep.
Well, this has been helpful.
Is the the propane, is that for filling propane trucks? Is that what's going on? Those are big tanks.
That that would be to supply, um, home, you know, home heating. So we would, yes, we would fill the truck and obviously it would be to supply customers within the area. We're looking to grow that market. We recently acquired Conkett Oil. And we recently acquired Hutala Oil out of, um, Templeton. Yeah. Yep, so we've, um, we've acquired Hutala Oil recently. And, um, like I said, Conkett Oil, we just built a propane facility in Ayr, Massachusetts, and so, um, so we're actually looking to grow the Hafner's brand within that market and, um, this is just another step in the process of getting the Hafner's brand out there, so. Um, yeah.
Okay, any further questions? So I think you guys have some, uh, stuff to contemplate and figure out the next strategy for yourselves and update us if you wish. But I think
Absolutely.
I think that gives you guys something to think about.
It does, we we definitely appreciate your time.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much, we do appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Chris.
Bye-bye.
Well, I apologize, we're way, way over. But there was a lot of stuff to talk about.
We don't hold we don't hold you responsible, that's all right.
It's Jay, he's the one who sets the agenda.
Well, we didn't, and we didn't even get Richard, I'm not sure if I made a mistake or something, what happened, but hmm, I mean, maybe we'll get him next time. Okay.
Oh, we've learned a lot.
Yeah.
Indeed.
So I take that yawn as a proposal to end the session.
So it is.
Yeah. I thought I I read it as a motion to adjourn, which I'll yawn in second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, unfortunately, no discussion will ensue. So I'll ask you to vote to end this lovely, uh, soiree. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous.